...with local communities. Mohamed Khan of King Fahad Mosque says many people from his faith don't trust officers in uniform, so we'd like to see more elected officials take part in the outreach.
The guy with the badge usually represents an extortionist from back home. I think the mayor is very focused on economics and other areas, but I'd like to see him more involved in this.
Deputy Chief Downing is concerned about the growth of militant groups like the Islamic State of Iraq and Syria, and the very real threat of militants with American passports returning home from training to carry out violence.
They have the funds, they have a large essential army, they have the equipment, they have the tactics and training.
But Los Angeles has Muslim Americans working with law enforcement. There's also a new outreach program in the works called the Safe Spaces Initiative. It's said to be the first intervention program for young American Muslims at risk of carrying out violent extremism. Near UCLA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Safe Spaces Initiative is headed by the Muslim Public Affairs Council. Its goal is to create a safe space in local mosques where people can freely discuss sensitive political topics, and where leaders can steer those who may be headed towards extremism back on the right path. The LAPD Forensics Crime Lab is a leader throughout the country in crime scene investigations, and now a rigorous test helps prove this crime lab is tops in its field. Anna Marcos reports.
Inside this lab, you will find a drug device that can analyze any of 200 narcotics, even through glass or plastic.
And you can see it just gives you a very clear result.
There are computer programs that match bullets or shoe prints left at a crime scene with those left at other crimes, and which identify make and manufacturer. There's a camera that captures a crime scene in 3D. It's all in a day's work for the LAPD's Forensics Crime Lab. The work here is so good and so cutting-edge that the lab just passed a rigorous test to get accredited with flying colors.
It would be A+.
The crime scene evidence tested here can often be the primary or even the only evidence used in a court case, and the LAPD lab is a leader in forensics across the country.
It's very important that we be accurate and that our results be completely reliable and irrefutable. Every juror wants to believe that when the expert witness takes the stand, they can believe in everything they're telling them in order to make their decision.
Every five years, the lab must meet more than 800 criteria in order to get accredited. Everything from employee work habits to how machines are calibrated, like this breathalyzer. The equipment gets checked, but it's the more than 200 employees who make the difference between accuracy and mistakes. They get tested rigorously.
The saying that a chain is no stronger than the weakest link applies. A laboratory will not be accredited if every analyst in the laboratory is not qualified, competent, and doing the work in accordance with their procedures.
The lab recently helped nail down evidence that kept a man behind bars in what police are calling a serial murder case in the valley. Firearms, bullets, DNA, shoe prints, narcotics, anything a criminal leaves behind at a crime scene is fair game for lab workers, whose meticulous efforts often help catch the bad guy. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Even though the full accreditation happens only every five years, the lab must also undergo surveillance visits once a year. The giant rubber ducky at the Port of L.A. has been the talk of the town. As Rasha Goel tells us, the attraction that's been a big draw for visitors has also been good for business.
It's definitely been a hotspot for pictures. If you were down at the Port of L.A. in the past month, you couldn't help but catch a glimpse of the big yellow rubber duck. It was a temporary art installation created by Dutch artist Florentine Hoffman and was part of the Port of L.A.'s Five-Day Tall Ships Festival. Due to an overwhelming response, the duck stay was extended.
Over the five days of the Tall Ship Festival, the duck and the tall ships, mostly the duck, brought a total of 277,000 people down to the L.A. waterfront.
I had to come down here because I'm a fan of ducks. I have ducks in my bathroom, I have ducks all over.
Over the last few weeks, people saw not only one, but two ducks, as a baby duck joined in on the fun.
So what's the big fascination? Well, for spectators, it's the world's largest rubber duck, and it's 62 feet tall. And for local businesses, it's helped increase sales here at the Port of Los Angeles.
The tall ships were fine, but the duck was a big draw.
It's brought more people in my shop.
Officials say they are still reviewing the economic analysis, but are estimating the benefit to be in the millions. Attractions such as this one are a small part of the big plan to help make the L.A. waterfront a destination for tourists.
Fishing was a big industry down here. Canneries, shipbuilding, all that's gone away, so we realize that on the community side, if we can build the L.A. waterfront and make it a tourist destination, people will come and spend their dollars.
The big rubber duck may have already said its farewell, but it's left a lasting impact at the Port of Los Angeles.
That old Sesame Street song, you know, "Rubber Ducky, you're the one," you know, so that's been going in my head for a long time now.
Bring it back every year. Leave it here, I don't care.
In San Pedro, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
While the duck days of summer may be over, the 10-foot baby duck has found a new home and will be staying at the port. A city leader wants L.A. to create a homeless czar position, more trees in One Harbor Community, and a new mural at a local park. These stories and more in City Beat. Councilman Jose Wezar, whose district includes Skid Row, is asking the city to create a homeless czar position. Currently, the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, a joint city-county agency, is largely responsible for homeless services and coordination for the city. But given the size of Los Angeles and the scale of the problem, Wezar's motion calls for the city to establish a full-time position to manage homelessness initiatives across the city. Wezar also currently announced a joint-city-county effort that not only cleans the streets of Skid Row every other month, but also provides social services to the homeless. Councilmember Jose Wezar recently honored Kate Del Castillo, a successful Mexican artist, human rights advocate, and L.A. resident. In addition to her entertainment work, Del Castillo was named ambassador of the Mexican Commission on Human Rights to Combat Human Trafficking in 2009, and launched the Blue Heart campaign to raise awareness and fight against human trafficking in Latin America. Del Castillo has five films set for release this year, including The 33, co-starring Antonio Banderas. Councilman Joe Buscaino joined community members to celebrate the planting of 136 trees in San Pedro, along Pacific Avenue and 9th, 13th, and 22nd Streets. This latest project continues the tree-planting initiative in Buscaino's district that started in Wilmington and Harbor City, where 110 trees were planted. The next stop will be Watts, where more trees will be planted to improve the 15th Council District's tree canopy. The multi-agency effort included the L.A. DWP and the city's Bureau of Sanitation. A new mural at Fox and Laurel Park in San Fernando was recently unveiled. The infusion of art at the green space in Councilman Felipe Fuentes's district came at the urging of the community. The 100-foot mural was designed in collaboration with local residents and is representative of Pacoima, its past, present, and future. Artist Kristi Sandoval was selected to render the final design due to her extensive experience as a muralist and her involvement in the San Fernando Valley. The mural was funded by a community development block grant received by the Los Angeles Neighborhood Land Trust. Art, it's a tie that binds. Two groups of disabled artists separated by an ocean share their struggles and triumphs through their passion for art. The exhibit is now on display at the Chinese-American Museum. A traditional Chinese watercolor of blossoms, a still life of sunflowers, dark tears streaming down the face of a man. These are the works by more than 40 artists in their own right, but who also share the understanding of what it's like to live with a disability.
The Chinese-American Museum is extremely happy to be able to present this breakthrough exhibit for everyone. It's definitely a wonderful event to happen, not only to the Chinese-American Museum, but to the city of Los Angeles.
Trans-Pacific ties bridging Hong Kong and Los Angeles through art is the name of the new exhibit on display at the Chinese-American Museum at the El Pueblo Historical Monument. The exhibit, the museum's first international collaboration, brings together the works of artists from Hong Kong and Los Angeles. The museum's international partner for this exhibit is the oldest and largest charitable organization in Hong Kong.
I am honored to be able to bring artists with disabilities from the Tongwa Group of Hospitals here to Los Angeles to be able to share their artistic talents with everyone.
The exhibit not only exemplifies the artists' shared passion for art, its mission is to encourage an ongoing dialogue about the shared histories and challenges that unite the community of artists, no matter their origin. Thirty pieces of artwork featured are from Hong Kong and 20 from Southern California.
Visitors to Los Angeles will be able to see the great work that we're doing here and in our reaching out in friendship to our brothers and sisters across the Pacific.
The Southern California-based Chinese Parents Association for the Disabled was the other partner in the exhibit. The show runs through December 14. In this week's List of Things to Do, a lobster fest, a tour of Union Station, and Eat/Drink The Los Angeles Municipal Art Gallery's famed fundraiser, sponsored by Los Angeles Magazine, will take place on Saturday, September 13, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m., with a VIP reception from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the Barnsdall Art Park at 4,800 Hollywood Boulevard. The event, called Eat/Drink Art, a kaleidoscope of the senses, will be catered by celebrity chef Chris Morningstar. There will be live musical performances, and KCRW's DJ Dan Wilcox will also be spinning tunes. In addition to live painting, performance artists, giant puppets, and more, the evening will also feature a silent auction of the works of more than 45 emerging and renowned artists. For more information and to buy tickets, go to barnsdall.org/eatdrinkart. The annual Port of Los Angeles Lobster Festival is upon us. This year's three-day event takes place Friday to Sunday, September 12, 13, and 14. The lobster festival features fresh, discounted Maine lobster meals flown in fresh daily and cooked on the spot. Lobster lovers will enjoy a scenic outdoor park along L.A.'s historic waterfront and shops at Porzacall in San Pedro. There's not only lobsters on the menu, but more than a dozen bands are also on the festival's entertainment menu, as well as dancing, street performers, tall ships, and more. Porzacall Village is located at the intersection of Sixth Street and Harbor Drive in San Pedro. Hours vary each day. Go to lobsterfest.com for details. Metro is offering a special tour of Union Station on the second Sunday of each month as part of its celebration of Union Station's 75th anniversary. The next tour takes place on September 14, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Led by trained Metro art docents, the tours will cover historic Union Station art, architecture, and spaces not generally open to the public. Tours are free, reservations are not required. Union Station is located at 800 North Alameda Street, meet at the information booth inside the Alameda Street entrance. Go to metro.net for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. The Salvadoran community in Los Angeles recently celebrated their roots and heritage with the parade through the streets of Hollywood. Rasha Goel has more.
Patriotic flags, people in authentic dresses, and Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell as the grand marshal were all part of the 14th Annual Salvadoran Parade, held near the intersection of Van Ness and Santa Monica Boulevards in East Hollywood.
It's a tradition to have the parade in this thoroughfare, and this is a corridor that has lots of Salvadoran residents and businesses, and it's a gathering spot for the Salvadoran community.
Happy Salvadoran Independence Day!
The parade is also a celebration of the Central American country's Independence Day, which falls in September.
So far, we have been like a country when we don't have a war, and we're trying to grow as, you know, as a family, and little by little, we have been doing that.
The Salvadoran community is the second-largest Hispanic group in Los Angeles. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacitybeat.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Cindy, and I'm in Little Tokyo, and you're watching Channel 35, Your City,
Mitchell Englander, I am the presiding council president. Wanted to welcome you all for being here on time. Thank you so much. We are also live broadcast on Channel 35 and want to also welcome many of our special guests here that are in council chambers this morning. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonden, Buscano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Corretts, Corrian, LaPaz, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Bloomingfield moves, Mr. Bonden seconds.
Next is committee resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Wezar moves, Mr. Corretts seconds.
Mr. President, say it's Tuesday. Now be the time for the flag salute.
Great, thank you very much. If we can get everybody to please rise for the flag salute, and we will ask Councilmember O'Farrell to please lead us in the flag salute. Thank you. Place your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. President, first, there is a request to continue items 18, 22, and 28 to September 16, and item 30 to September 12.
Okay, 18, 22, and the others?
And 28 to September 16, and item 30 to September 12.
Okay, that'll be the order without objection. What do we have next on the agenda?
Items 1 and 2 are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety requests to continue items 1Q and R to September 23, and also reports that items 1A, B, E, and F may be received and filed as much as the liens have been paid.
Okay, that'll be the order. Do we have cards on the remaining items?
Yes, cards on items 1 and 2.
1 and 2, so we'll hold 1 and 2 on the desk? Okay, and item 2, we have... Cards on 2?
Yes.
Well, all items 2 also. That takes us, I believe, to items 3 through 21?
Yes, items 3 through 21 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, do we have any specials on those particular items?
Mr...
Mr. Wezar.
Thank you. Number 12 for a possible amendment, please.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hold 12 for a possible amendment. Mr. Buscaino.
Item 17, please.
Members, any other specials? Seeing none, we'll open the roll on those remaining items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
11 ayes, great, thank you so much.
12 ayes, I'm sorry.
12 ayes. Mr. Sadio. You're good. Mr. Wezar.
We also hold 5, please.
Well, we voted on 5, so we'll go ahead and reconsider that item. So we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration on item 5. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
We'll go ahead and hold item 5 for Mr. Wezar. Okay, that takes us to public hearing that has not been held, that has not been held on items 22 through 43. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President. Items 22 through 43 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those items are before us. Do we have cards on any of those items?
Cards on items 25, 29, 32, 35, 36, and 39.
Okay, the balance of those items are before us. Any specials? Seeing no specials, we'll go ahead and open the roll and the balance of those items. And we won't close the roll. Mr. Parks.
Yes, we have 36, 39, and 41.
39?
39 and 41.
We'll go ahead and hold those items for Mr. Parks. Open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Great. Okay, Madam Clerk, where does that take us?
Mr. President, that takes council to items called special.
Okay, first, we'll go ahead and take cards on... Well, let's go ahead and go with 1 and 2. Do we have cards on 1 and 2? Okay, on item 1, 1D, Jose Escobar, followed by 1J, Rod Sallard, followed by Gregory Jones. In that particular order? If you folks are ready, come on up to the podium. We'll ask that the first speaker come to the podium, if you would, and the other two speakers just stand behind the second set of velvet ropes, so you're ready to speak. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Anytime you're ready.
Well, I was wondering about this bill that they're charging me for $2,729.81. I don't really know what this bill is all about. Charles explained to me what it's all about, but it's not my bill. I'm the property owner, but I never knew about these bills.
Okay, we'll go ahead and continue your item for two weeks, and if you could, go ahead, sir, and go to the side of the chambers over here, and the council office is going to come talk to you and meet with you as well. So on 1D for Mr. Escobar, we'll go ahead and continue that for two weeks. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have us reconsider...
I'd like to, uh, have us reconsider item 1R and then continue that for two weeks as well. We've been, uh, working with the property owner to resolve it.
Okay, it's already continued. So we did continue that one, yes. Yeah, we were reading your mind on that one. Yes, thank you. And, I'm sorry, Mr. Corrigan, did you were...
Hi, yeah.
Okay, got it. No, thank you so much. Sir, please, sorry about that.
Yes, sir. Uh, yes, per, as per, uh, the last city council meeting, I have the required permit in hand for the property. And a young lady that was here last time got the letters that I had given to the inspector and to the, uh, to the commissioner, uh, for the illness and the, and the out-of-town work that I'd been doing. I don't know if you want to see this or... 12232 Miranda?
Okay, um, he's gonna, the council member, his office is gonna come talk to you on the side of the ropes as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we'll come back to that one. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mr. President. How you doing? Um, I'm trying to work something out with Mr. Charles, but I really don't think I owe this, 'cause I did fix it, and I thought that it was cleared up about three or four years ago, but it doesn't seem to or not. And the reason that it took me so long to fix it, I almost chopped my toe, I chopped my toe off trying to fix it, and they had to put my toe back on. So that's what took so long to fix the, uh, fix the property, but, uh, I really don't think I owe it. And I'm, and I do live in the property, so I don't think I should have a lien either.
Can you confirm your address?
2817 Dalton Avenue, Los Angeles, California, 90018.
Okay, I believe that's Council District 8. Council District 8. Okay, we're gonna go ahead, if you want to have a seat, they're gonna look into it. Or, in fact, if you could meet, uh, the council staff on the side as well. So we'll go ahead and hold that on the desk and have you meet with them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll come back to that as well. Okay, Mr. Rodney Barnes, followed by Nancy Lee.
Oh, yes. Hello, council people. Uh, my name is Rodney Barnes. I am property owner at 6306 Second Avenue, Los Angeles, under Mr. Parks District. Um, I had a few citations, a couple citations issued against me that I never had any knowledge of. Um, it's rental property that I don't live in, and they sent the bill to that property, but I have no mail that goes to that property. All my mail is directed to a PO box. Um, I have these violations that I'm not even sure are really the legitimacy of the violations.
So, sir, if you'd like, um, the council office said that they would meet you at the side of the, the ropes as well.
Okay.
Side of the chambers, okay?
Thank you, yes, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Ms. Lee, Nancy Lee? Followed by John Walsh.
Good morning, Nancy Lee for Wells Fargo Bank, an interested party.
Morning.
Good morning. I'd like to speak to somebody about this property. Uh, my client is interested in, um, making the repairs.
Can you confirm the address, please?
It is...
That, that I'm actually, ma'am, was continued already for two weeks.
Right, right, I understand, but since I filled out a card, I thought I'd just wait.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or straight J Walsh Confidential, and very important that you go for the up-to-the-minute news at tweeting at Hollywood Dems. You notice what happens here every single time? Those people who are facing liens, who are smart enough to come down here and protest, the lien is postponed for two weeks, you speak to the councilman's, uh, woman's, uh, deputy, and guess what happens? That's right, your lien is substantially reduced, 'cause I have never seen anyone in the past five years come back two weeks later and say, "You didn't reduce my lien", and no anger. John, apparently your timer isn't working, but I've spoken for about one minute. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. So I believe that concludes all of the cards. Are there, were there remaining items? Was that it? Were there remaining items that were on one that we didn't have cards for that we can vote on? Or should we continue one and come back to it, Madam Clerk?
Yes, there are items that you can vote on.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the roll on those remaining items. The ones that we held on the desk, we'll hold and come back to those after resolution. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we are on item 2, called special for cards. Laura Ballack, or Bolick, followed by Sonia Rodriguez, followed by Maria Ibarra. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, may I ask the other, um, folks that I'm with to just join behind me? We'll speak to, uh, one, one after the other.
It's one, it's per card, so...
Yes.
It went under your two minutes.
Yes, for sure. I just want to invite them to come up.
Sure.
Obviously, we're all wearing the same green t-shirt, so I wanted to have us present as a group, if you don't mind.
You got it.
Within our timeframe. Um, my name is Laura Ballack. I'm with the Trust for Public Land, and I'm joined today by other staff members from the Trust for Public Land and the Avalon Green Alley Green Team, um, a group of community members all here in green t-shirts that are, um, part of, uh, an effort to green alleys in South Los Angeles within Council District 9. Um, and, um, this item that's, that's presented today is part of a larger pilot effort to green alleys in the project area. The alleys in South Los Angeles and across the city of Los Angeles are largely underutilized spaces. They represent 900 linear miles of right-of-way, and, um, in South Los Angeles, they are places of illegal dumping and illicit activities. Um, so the project, and specifically the item to, uh, redesignate this portion of alley, will demonstrate the possibilities of greening alleys for community benefit, stormwater infiltration, and, um, just, uh, creating places of, of social cohesion. As you can see behind me, we have a large group of people, and this is just part of it. So the Trust for Public Land, along with our many nonprofit partners and NGOs who could not join today, would like to thank the council and, uh, specifically Councilman Price for his leadership in this effort, and I, um, would like to also recognize this as a city project from, led by LA Sanitation and Watershed Production Division. So thank you.
Good morning. My name's Sonia Rodriguez. I'm a member of the community in South LA with the project of the Alley Cleanup, Equipo Verde, Green Team, and we are all volunteers, and we are, it's, it's very important for us for the, our alleys to look with a green environment, to provide a safe environment for our children. A lot of our children that are, have been inspired at Main Street Elementary to help us out there and clean out, they, they are called the Inspired to Clean Team. Uh, high school students from Maya Angelo High School, they decided to have a career with ecology and the environment, and also LA Academy, Academy Middle School. Some children come out there on Saturday mornings and help to clean our alleys.
Great, thank you.
Muy buenas.
Just to confirm your name, if you can state your name again for the record.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Maria Ibarra, y también soy miembro voluntaria de...
Un momento. Can we, can we get you, get a translator, please?
Hello, hello.
Can you hold her time? In fact, if you can start her time over.
Hello, hello.
Thank you.
Buenas, buenos dias. I am a volunteer member of the, uh, Green Team. And I am coming to support the team. So that we can, so that we can request to go, to continue for the support from you. So that our children... Continue getting involved. In the project. I have a daughter with special needs. And where she's getting involved to, to clean and plant. And she's learning and to feeling useful. And so that this project can be beneficial, so that she, she can get involved in the alleys. And continue being involved with people. So that the community is more secure, and it is a more greener community and beautiful. So that they can come out. And so that this can continue moving to another areas. That's one of the reasons why we're here to request support. So that we can request all the, uh, support in the Green Team, in the community. And we, and we parents getting more involved. So that we can have a safer community for our children. And that's why we're here to, uh, request your support. So that our children, so that our children become leaders in that area. That's why they're learning in schools. To value the nature. And to keep on studying and create a bigger environment for the world. And that's why we're here to ask you for your support. So that these members who come to represent and to come even more. And thank you for helping us.
Great, thank you very much. Having no other cards, and having no speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close up. We'll hold, yes. Councilman, did you want to speak?
Yes, may I speak?
Oh, please, of course.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I didn't see your name on the queue, I'm sorry. Yes, of course.
Thank you, thank you. Colleagues, it's my pleasure to have a side of me for us today, and its passage is going to lead to some very exciting and groundbreaking changes, not only in my district, uh, but, uh, our city, as we begin to rethink the way we use our alleys. As some of you know, South LA faces immense challenges with illegal dumping. Since I took office last July, my office has collected more than 1,500 tons of trash and bulky items. That's like three jumbo jets worth of trash. Uh, a majority of this trash was collected from nearly 300 miles of alleys that we have concentrated in District 9. In fact, South LA has the largest concentration of alleys in the city. The purpose, uh, the purpose for most of these alleys has long been forgotten, and sadly, many have become dumping grounds for bulky items, trash, debris, and a number of toxic and hazardous materials. This doesn't just present an eyesore to the community, it blocks, uh, egress and ingress of, to homes, invites criminal activity, and severely impacts the basic quality of life for residents. But in partnership with the Trust for Public Lands, representatives of whom you've heard from, uh, this morning, our community is embarking upon a monumental effort to transform our alleyways into usable, green space for all to enjoy. Our first set of alleys, the ones that we are vacating today, will provide multiple benefits to our community, including adding critically needed open space in a park-poor community, and giving our youth a beautiful, usable, green space to enjoy. Our first set of alleys, um, I look forward to adding as many of these green alleys as possible to the district, uh, with help with, which also helps us to bring, uh, bring about, um, public art along with stormwater reclamation. I'm very proud that the ninth will be the first place in the city to implement green alleyways, and I encourage all of my colleagues to look to this program and to reinvent open space throughout the city, and I urge your aye vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Price. With that, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, that passes. Thank you so much. All right, colleagues, we're gonna go ahead and take next, Councilman Parks.
I think we resolve L and O, one L and O.
L and O, okay. Did you want to move forward with the vote on those?
Let me just do two things. One, if we can ask for a continuance on L for two weeks so they can resolve it, and we'd like on O that the, uh, charges for that particular one should be, let me get my piece of paper, $148 rather than the 1805.
Okay, so, um, on that first one, it'll be continued till September 23rd, is that correct? Two weeks?
Yes.
And we have the new amount on the second one? We'll go, we'll go ahead with those, uh, suggestions. Do we need a second, City Attorney?
If you have a grab, if you have news.
Okay, uh, Mr. Corretes will, uh, second, and we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Great, excellent, thank you so much. The next items, we'll take our items 22, 25, 29, 32, and 35, all called special for cards. Again, 22, 25, 29, 32, and 35. Shaun on items 25 and 29.
Yes, good morning. I'm back from summer break. Uh, item 25, I have support. It's good for the city. Item 29, item 29 is good. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. All right. Um, next, Donna, item 35.
It shows over here that, uh, people are not safe when out there, that people are being murdered. So it shows that we should be able to have the ability to be able to arm ourselves so that things like this wouldn't happen. If that person was able to, uh, we were able to have, uh, weapons on us, then we wouldn't be able to, uh, be, uh, killed by these murders, and it's true, said ISIS might also come out here, so we need to be well armed and, uh, be able to, ability to, uh, use these, uh, use them properly, be, go to the gun range. So I say that we need to keep ourselves safe, and so things like this won't happen. And I'll repeat it better, at a better time in another day. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And item 22 is actually continued, colleagues, so we won't be voting on that today. John, you want to come up on items 25 and 35? John Walsh? Okay, we'll take a pass on those two, we'll, oh, you're here. I'm sorry, I didn't see you walking up.
I thought I heard you say Shaun. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Uh, let's go first to item 25. This is, uh, the Hollywood Walk of Fame, uh, which is in terrible, terrible condition. Uh, the cracks, people slipping, falling, and it's a nonprofit that runs it, that's hooked in, uh, with, uh, the city council. Come on out. I'll, I'm gonna put on my website the worst stars conditions on Hollywood Boulevard. This is for Los Tigres del Norte. It's about time. The population of Hollywood is about, or the city of Los Angeles is about, what, 50, 60% Hispanic? There are about nine to 10, maybe 11 Hispanic stars. It is the walk of racism. I could name you 20 famous, uh, Mexican, Central American stars, uh, and, uh, generally Hispanic stars who do not have a star on the Walk of Fame, and that is because of racism. Number 22, uh, this is the appointment of Cielo Castro to the Board of Fire and...
22 is continued.
32. Uh, Cielo Castro to the Fire and Police Pension Commission, we're all in favor, but what we don't like is that she was forced by our racist mayor to, uh, only half racist, uh, on his father's, on his mother's side. If you get appointed, you have to give the mayor a signed, undated, undated letter of resignation. You vote once against what the mayor wants you to do, and he puts the date on it, and You vote once against what the mayor wants you to do and he puts the date on it and you are out. Now Bradley didn't do that, but incidentally, you've never seen that in the LA Times. Of course, the LA Times reporters are flirted with by the mayor and they give in. Both men and women, especially the men reporters. Number 35, another offer for, for identification, conviction, murder of Ramon Estrada. Snitches get stitches. You, you combed your records and got up here and proudly said you've awarded one, one reward in the past 20 years. It's a game. These rewards mean nothing because the gang, incidentally, there is a gang war that's just started in Holly, in the city of Los Angeles. That's why the, the fun bus was shot up. You don't care, the people up here don't give a damn as long as it stays in South LA. If the gang war spills over to where the white people live, west of La Brea, they will do something about it. The gangs know that, they, they continue to fight in the area where they are contained. What is the, the gang war about? The gang war is about control of selling narcotics in bars. Notice a bar owner was shot to death in South LA on the street the other day. Coincidence? No. Enemy action. And remember, the members of these two gangs that we're talking about had me as a substitute teacher because I taught in South LA for a quarter of a century. So they know who I am. I used to be their substitute teacher. And they very seldom forget me because people in the streets stop me now and say you were my substitute teacher for one day a quarter of a century ago. And so that's 35. And we'd just like to say that HollywoodHighlands.org. And when I, when I come back on the public comment, that's when I'm, I'm going to take the roof off this building. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Great, thank you very much. All right, having no other cards on those items, those are items 25, 29, 32, and 35. We'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Great. We also have a reconsideration request on item 34, so we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration on item 34. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
There's a request to amend item 34 simply to receive and file. So we'll go ahead and that item will be for us now as a receive and file. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Great, thank you. Now we'll go ahead. And we'll take the items for Mr. Parks. Items five, also, we'll go ahead and continue that till tomorrow so we can take item five off the board. And we have items 36, 39, and 41 for Councilmember Parks, but we have cards. Did you want to hear the cards first, sir?
Cards first and I could just do them all at one time.
You got it, all right. Donna, item 36 and 39.
Again, I want to repeat myself that it's, we have another murder of Luis Vazquez that shows that we're not safe out there. So I don't see why we need all these laws preventing us from having our guns, gun control laws, and having also ones on bullets. So that we should be able to protect ourselves against these people who go out there and murder the gang members. And eventually, they will be having bigger things going on when we have ISIS come out here. And we have members of United States citizens that join ISIS. So that we need to be able to arm ourselves and do it properly. And be able to have classes to be able to learn how to do this properly. So, yeah, so we need to have our protected and also goes, same goes for number 39, the same thing. So we need to be able to protect ourselves. I'm going to leave the rest of my time for public comment. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Parks.
I dozed off on you, just a second.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I have three reward motions and I'd like to just do them all at one time. We have no family members or officers here today. But number 36, on July 11, 2014, at 4:48 PM, 44-year-old victim Luis Vazquez was sitting in the curb at 1,600 Block West 35th Street when he's approached by two, by a male black suspect who then stabbed him in the neck and fled in an unknown, fled on foot. Mr. Vazquez was transported to California Hospital where he passed away based on his wounds. The motive of the crime is unknown. The officers assigned to Detective David Garrido, Gang Criminal Gang Homicide, at 2134854341 has asked for this reward to assist in creating leads that may bring this to a successful conclusion. Number 39, on June 23, 2013, at approximately 10 PM, 19-year-old Clarence Born was walking home when he was confronted by an unidentified group of suspects who shot multiple times. After the shooting, Mr. Born, the suspects fled. Fire Department personnel responded. He did not survive from his injuries. We are asking for a $50,000 reward. Detective Garrido from Criminal Gang Homicides, 2134854341 is the contact. And then finally, on the, the last one is a renewal of a reward motion. On August 25, 2012, 6:30 PM, 39-year-old Tyree Rowe was shot while seated in his vehicle at 1957 West 77th Street. The suspects fled the location in an awaiting vehicle. Mr. Rowe was transported to a local hospital where he was deceased. The detectives, Derazo and Ross from Criminal Gang Homicide, 2134854341 is asking for assistance. We'd ask on all three of these reward motions, a $50,000 on each and that we ask the public for whatever information they have to assist LAPD to come forward to help solve these three cases. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And based on that and Mr. Parks's request, I would urge everybody to vote aye as well. So if we can open the roll on those balance of those items, 25, 29, 32, and 35. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. I'm sorry, 36, 39, and 41. Apologize for that.
Fourteen ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Just keeping on your toes. All right, and in light of the sidebar conversation on 1J, there's been a request to continue that for three weeks to September 30th. So without objection, 1J will be continued for three weeks. Okay.
And that's September 30th?
September 30th is correct. So we're going to go ahead and go to item 17, called special by Councilmember Buscaeno. You've got 30 seconds. No, I'm kidding, of course, yeah, take your time. Has 12 been circulated with amending motions yet? So we're ready on item 12?
Yes, 12 A and B have been circulated.
Okay, but we're not ready yet because there's more coming. So we'll go ahead and hold off on 12 as well. We'll go to general public comment. So we'll start off with the fun part of the program for general public comment. And first, we've got Willis Clark. And we've already gotten all cards on general public comments submitted. Good morning, sir. You can go ahead and speak.
I'm Sergeant Willis Buddy Clark Jr., retired Marine for United States Marine Corps. PTSD, which is post-traumatic syndrome, trauma disorder. And I was going to speak, but the fellow who represents World Peace Now for a billion signatures can say it much better than I, so I'd like to introduce Scotty Brewer.
Sir, yeah, do you have, you don't have a card though, filled out? You do have a card, so, okay. So we'll go ahead, if you want to, go ahead and speak and we'll take your card now and just say your name again.
Scott Brewer.
Great, thank you.
I am the founder of Peace Now and the organizing member of the International Cities of Peace Resolution. First, I want to thank Councilman Coretts, Recorian, Councilman Hughes R., Councilman Englander, Councilman Bloomingfield for all being sponsors or cosponsors or seconds on this. And the General Council for their help in allowing Los Angeles to become a leadership, take a leadership position to show the world that a diverse and complicated city with many people can take a role in establishing peace by setting goals, by recognizing peace. And this resolution establishes through your proclamation that Los Angeles is an international city of peace. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Truly appreciate that. Shaun.
He's back. I went to, when I left for City Hall to, that last day of City Hall Gym back in June, I went to Ireland. I had a good time. Choir went to Ireland. We had a tour of Ireland. Belfast and Dublin were my favorites. We stayed at the hotel. We stayed there till the 4th. We have an eight-hour delay coming back to LA. What a bummer. We need to fix our sidewalks, streets. That's the, that's the year of your goal. A tour guide told me, when, when Ireland runs City Hall up there, when people say a bad word in Irish, they get thrown out. They don't give you warnings, they throw you out. That's something to think about.
Great, thank you. And now we'll go ahead and take item 17, called special by Councilmember Buscaeno.
Thank you, Mr. President. The item before you, colleagues, once approved, will name the portion of Compton Avenue in Watts between 109th Street and 110th Street, Pastor Reginald Pope Way. And standing with me is his nephew, Alvin Stafford, who's joined me in, in this item. And a little bit about Pastor Pope. He is, I think, one of the longest-standing pastors who's served in our Watts community for 40 years. Reginald A. Pope was born and raised in Louisiana, being the oldest boy of eight. In Louisiana, within his close, tight-knit family structure, he gained leadership qualities, faith, and his love for people. In 1948, Mr. Pope made a bold move to leave behind the life he knew in Louisiana to seek a brighter future in Los Angeles. And once in LA, he did struggle. He knew he was called to be a preacher but kept running away from that career path. After a few years trying to do his, his way, Mr. Pope surrendered to the will of God and began walking in his ministry calling. Shortly after finishing seminary school, Pastor Pope became the pastor of Bethel Missionary Baptist Church in 1975. Today, at a vibrant age of 81, Pastor Pope began the process of giving the new generation of Bethel a chance to make their mark in Watts. Pastor Pope started a nonprofit organization called Go E There For, Go E There. Wasted no time in making his presence known by formulating the Watts Back-to-School Festival. The Back-to-School Festival has brought major corporations such as AT&amp;T, Nike, Coca-Cola, and Converse to an unrepresented area to cultivate relationships within their target market. And amazing work he has done. I recently met with the Watts Ministers Group in which Pastor Pope leads every quarter. He's a humbled man. I told him that we were approving this and he just, he just smiled. And what a deserving honor it is to name this section of Watts, his Pastor Pope Way. And with that, I know there's so much more to come for Pastor Pope. And we want to thank him and recognize him and we're going to have a big community celebration once this item is approved and we, we designate this, this section of, of Compton Avenue between 109th, 110th Street as Pastor Reginald Pope Way. So thank you, Mr. Stafford, for joining us. I know it's, it's an incredible honor for your family. And we want to thank you for helping leading the charge and work with my office and John Jones III, my Watts deputy, to make this happen. So thank you, colleagues, for your support in moving this item forward. Thank you.
Congratulations. We'll go ahead now and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Fantastic, all right. Thank you, Councilmember Buscaeno, for that. Okay, we'll go ahead and continue with public comment now. And we've got Lillian Pearl. Good morning, ma'am.
I have lots of names. I put them in there for diversity. I have so many wide exposure to all the people. I came today because I have a dream and it's to get the homeless off the street. I think we should be the first city to do it. And I would like to put a lot of effort of my own into it. And I have a plan how to do it, but I would like to invite you to join me. And I don't want to do it by myself. It'll take a lot of people to do it, but I have a great plan. I was doing accounting with regard to opening a business and I decided, well, how can I make a lot of money? I can't go back into the legal field, that's too slow. And I'm too old to wait that long to get a little money. And I need a lot of money to, to build housing for all the people. Not in a big building where you go in like in a beehive, but separate housing so people can be alone and try to refine their inner self and to become creative people. Grandma Moses started painting at 90. I think we have a little time left. I know I have a few years left. And I want to invite each and every one of you to participate with me when it comes to voting to help me out. Now I know how to make the money. I've already done figures for two and a half years, backwards and forwards, upwards and down. And I can make money roll like a gold river. I mean it. And it's so much money, it's laughable. I just burst out laughing when I think, oh my God, I can make $30 million a day. Oh my God, I can make $60 million a day. Oh my God, this is impossible. But I did the figures and if I can do the figures, I can make it happen. It doesn't mean I'm going to do it by myself. Actually, the first month should take 10,000 people on the outside. And on the inside, a smaller percentage of people, but we'll be cooking things. And cooking things that we will vend. Now, there's money in vending.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Your time is up, but really do appreciate you coming and speaking. Got to let some other speakers come up now. Thank you so much. Is this Kelvin Berman Harrison? Good morning, sir.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Sifu Kelvin Berman Harrison. I'm a member of the NAACP. I'm also a member of the South Korean-Chinese Kung Fu Associations. I'm addressing President Obama. I'm, I'm also addressing Honorable Reverend Jesse Jackson Sr. And I'm also addressing Bishop Charlesy Blake and Pastor Price as well here in Los Angeles. Individuals, I have been writing to you for many, many times and been sending to your ministries, certain clergies, and been asking you to work with me in order to try to better America, especially here in Los Angeles, and also to help me with certain legal situations that's been happening here in Los Angeles against me, dealing with racism, black-on-black crime. That just doesn't deal with me, but it also deals with my community, but it also deals with San Luis Obispo. Reverend Jesse Jackson, Ms. Felicia Neal at your office has been getting information as well as Mr. John Mitchell. What is going on when I'm working out here hard for my family and for citizens and I'm not getting any response? I got inventions that can help people all over this world and American allies. I got inventions that can help people all over this world and American allies. What seems to be the problem? President Obama, I have sent you information as well as how to revitalize America. I know you have many problems on your plate. Send someone that I can talk to that can work with me in order to get these projects done. I would like to also say, clergies, I have been railroaded from your lower administration, Bishop Blake and also Pastor Price, concerning trying to get to you, to negotiate with you, to make Los Angeles better with certain projects that I have that was inspired to me by the Lord heavenly God. Thank you very much, and hopefully I will be up here again in order to expose some other information. Thank you very much.
You're the next contestant for public comment.
Anyway, I, we need to fix Hill Street. I fell, fell at First and Hill, and my hip hurts. You should open video conferencing. Maryam's too sick to come today, but you should open up the video conferencing. You gave $3 million to settle with a white man offended by a black supervisor. Certainly, you had the money to reopen video conferencing, allow the vote of San Fernando Valley disabled in San Fernando Valley to speak. Anyway, I wanted to tell you, you can't get peace until you eradicate terrorism, those who want to destroy you. Our country and the whole world is in danger with ISIS. ISIS even penetrated Denmark. ISIS is gaining, gaining members everywhere, many places, including England and LA, I mean, US, United States of America, I meant to say, and Denmark. They're conquering more regions, and President Obama's doing nothing here and abroad. He has no military experience. He has no strategy. When beheading took place, he went and played golf. He's shown to be weak in Iraq, where he pulled out early, caused a vacuum, and for a need for ISIS. He let out Abu Bakr, Baghdadi, who started up the problems with ISIS. We also need to destroy Lieutenant, General Adain Sadawi and Fidel al-Hilal, and their instrumental in ISIS. And the Krishna Bible, the Antichrist, will come back from the Middle East, and meant, it might be more than one ISIS. ISIS is birchering Christians. We need cooperation with other countries so that we all can do it together, but we may need boots on the ground. We can't just say, no, definitely no boots on the ground. We can't wait. Our country needs to defend itself. Law-abiding citizens need to have the ability with so-called asset weapons. Our politicians will not protect them, so they'll be in a bunker.
Great, thank you very much. John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. There's only one issue here. A deputy city attorney has been arrested for kiddie porn, child porn on his computer. He worked out at the airport. They seized his computer 10 months ago. That's when his Confederate, city attorney, pure, put him on paid leave. He's been making money for 10 months. He has full benefits. Now, I have been told, okay, they never searched a city computer, the law computers or the City Hall computers, for kiddie porn. Now, this man, whose name is Christopher Garcia, who is not Hispanic, he is not Hispanic, you figure out what he is, he's laughing at you. He's making a full salary, and what are you doing? You're doing absolutely nothing. Now, I want, we're asking the city attorney, who has been shielding this man for 10 months, we only found out when the LAPD at the behest of the FBI arrested this man. This man just, is not just a city attorney, Mr. Garcia, he was a Superior Court, LA Judge pro tem. I got all that information from Metropolitan News, and he was also a US Attorney under Obama. There is a vast conspiracy of kiddie porn. I want everybody's computers up here to be washed and checked for kiddie porn, especially the deputy city attorney up here and others.
Great, yes.
I'd like to ask that item 1G be, 1J, excuse me, be continued for three weeks, please?
Okay, 1J will be continued for three weeks. That'll take us to September 30th, Mr. Cricorian, does that work for you? Great, excellent, thank you, that'll be the order without objection. Antonia Ramirez. Ms. Ramirez, good morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, Los Angeles is a city of diversity, full of wetbacks and Latino-Chango gangbangers in gangland Los Angeles. Councilmembers welcome terrorism, enemy combatants, and destruction of Los Angeles. Hell, they'll even reward LAPD and drug dealers, pimps, and homicidal killers for terrorizing Los Angeles' law-abiding citizens. Councilmen, Councilmembers Herb Weston, Mitchell Englander, Paul Cricorian, Gil Cedillo, Mike Bonin, Joe Buscaeno, Felipe Fuentes, they will censor and throw all law-abiding American citizens who speak out against them for gross corruption, fraud, abuse of power, inciting racism, violence, bullying, and fear and intimidation. Let's restore America. Let's house all our United States military veterans and pilots. Deport all wetbacks and Latino-Chango gangbangers and all the over 90,000 Central American gang-indoctrinated thugs. No amnesty, no asylum. They are bringing in all their diseases, meningitis, MRSA, scabies, staph infections, TBs, et cetera. I highly recommend this book. It's called America on the Brink by Frosty Woolridge. Again, this is a book that you need to buy. Again, America on the Brink, and it will inform all people as to the crisis that we are facing in America. Again, let us restore America. Let's deport all these illegals, and let's, again, restore the moral fibers of America. Again, all we want is safety, public safety all across this land. Again, we are owed that. Americans and our military veterans and our pilots are owed that. Let's get rid of these terrorists and gangbangers and wetbacks and all these enemy combatants. Let's make America whole. Let's get our military veterans out of the streets. God bless America and the military.
Jose Martinez, followed by Daniel, Daniel Gus. Yeah, I see you, all right. Whoever's ready first, come on up.
I'm in possession of an email from a sitting city commissioner at Animal Services, who describes Animal Services, the sitting commissioner describes it as a leaking rowboat and no way to plug all the holes at once. This email from the sitting city commissioner has been provided to the Controller's Office. I am offering Mr. Coretts's office a chance to find out why a city control, a city commissioner says that Animal Services is a leaking rowboat. There's failure to collect millions of dollars. There's thousands of missing animals, and the City Controller's Office is aware of it, but for some reason, they've not solicited the information that this city commissioner is pointing out. I know Mr. Coretts's office thinks that, gee, why did he write about it and not come to us? So, here's the city's commissioner's own words. "Animal Services is a leaking rowboat, no way to plug all the holes at once." Before Mr. Hirsch in Mr. Coretts's office accuses me of another hatchet job, I'm giving the city an opportunity to fix its problems, because we know why Mr. Hirsch protects Ms. Barnett, don't we? So, here is a city official's own words. You've got a leaking rowboat on your hands, millions of dollars is not coming into the city as it should, the city cannot account for thousands of missing animals, and Best Friends, which took in $234 million between '08 and 2012, owes the city hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, you complain about money, you complain about money, but Best Friends, with its $234 million, apparently owes the city hundreds of thousands of dollars. This is your chance to fix it before I write about it.
Thank you very much. Daniel Gus. No longer here. Oh, I'm sorry, Daniel, that was, I meant, I was reading another card. Jose Martinez. That was the name I read earlier. No longer here, okay, that's what I was going to do. All right, so with that, we have item 12 before us, and on 12, we're going to go ahead, the recommendation is to accept items A and C and receive and file item B. Seeing no speakers on the queue, that'll be the item before us, to accept A and C and receive and file item B. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I believe that, that should clear the agenda. Do we have items for posting and referral?
Yes, Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, then the desk is clear. Members, do we have any announcements? Councilmember Coretts.
Yes, I wanted to announce and once again recognize Mr. Scotty Brewer and Sergeant Willis Buddy Clark, who are both here with us, spoken public comment earlier. They're from peacenow.com, which is organized to promote the International Cities of Peace Resolution. They've been traveling around the world in an attempt to get 1 billion signatures on a petition that seeks to provide life-changing lessons on our methods to cultivate peace within our hearts, homes, and communities, and reverse the trend that has produced over 300,000 child soldiers across the globe. They're also here to encourage everyone in Los Angeles to attend the Los Angeles Day of Peace, to be held on September 21st, in addition to signing their petition at peacenow.com. And I've been joined by Councilmembers Blumenfield, Englander, Huzar, and Cricorian today in the introduction of the City of Peace Resolution in Los Angeles. So, let's give our guests a big hand.
All right, thank you very much, yes, absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember O'Farrell.
Mr. President, colleagues, we have the 9/11 Memorial Blood Drive right here at City Hall, sponsored by the American Red Cross. It begins tomorrow, Wednesday, September 10th, and will go until Thursday, September 11th, 9:00 to 3:00 PM. Location is City Hall, 4th floor, media room. For those wishing to give blood, you could call the council offices, and we could arrange for parking, so you can come in and, and donate blood for those in need. And what better way to honor the memory of that tragic day, September 11th, 2001? Hope to see you all tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Other announcements, colleagues? Councilmember Cedillo, for announcements?
Yes, I have one. It's very exciting, though incomplete. Many of you who've known me and my staff know Mario Betran, who's worked for me for many years, a great leader in his own right. At 1:00 this morning, he went with his wife to Kaiser Downey, and they're having a baby. And so, it's very, very exciting to welcome the birth of a new child, but I don't have any other details from the ones that came in very, very early, but, so I'll update you tomorrow, and we'll see the growth of this child by then.
Excellent, and please congratulate on our behalf as well. Councilmember Buscaeno.
Just want to announce newest member of Team Buscaeno, Joseph Campbell, our alleged deputy that you'll see on the floor here. Step right up, Joseph, get on Channel 35, all the millions of people watching live see you.
Joseph, can you please take a seat at the center table, so we can all have a round of questions and interviews and interrogation? Okay, no.
Just finished a great internship in Mayor Garcetti's office. We're pleased to join him, a lot of energy, and he's so happy to be working with each and every one of us, so welcome aboard, Joseph.
Great, congratulations. Nice to see staff flowing the other way now. All right, so with that, seeing no other announcements, if we can get everybody in chambers to please rise for adjourning motions. We'll start off with Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I rise today to adjourn in the memory of a legendary musician, a loving father, grandfather, and a dedicated community leader. Gerald Wilson, a musician for more than 75 years, who delighted millions all over the world with his music, passed away yesterday morning. He was 96 years old. A jazz icon, Gerald Wilson began his career as a youth teen, playing at Detroit's Plantation Club in the 30s. Wilson later served in the US Navy, and while there, he played with musicians like Clark Terry, Willie Smith, Jimmy Nottingham, and would later be reunited as the Great Lakes Experience Big Band. In the 1940s, Gerald made his way out to Los Angeles and began working the club circuit along the famous South Central Avenue corridor, including the famous musical venues like the Dunbar Hotel. It was along Central that Gerald solidified his musical career, providing guidance and assistance to a number of up-and-coming jazz musicians like Bobby Bryant, Harold Ann Jr., Jack Wilkins, and many others, who helped to make LA the epicenter of jazz on the West Coast. For more than seven decades, Gerald played and arranged for a tremendous number of jazz legends, including Duke Ellington, Dizzy Gillespie, Nancy Wilson, Sarah Vaughan, Ray Charles, Julie London, Ella Fitzgerald, Diana Washington, and many others. But Gerald was also driven to do more for his community. So, he spent several years as a professor at Cal State University, LA, Cal State University Northridge, Cal Arts, and the University of California at Los Angeles, hoping to train a new generation of jazz fans and musicians, where he was recognized several times by students and faculty as Teacher of the Year. Just a few months ago, we all had the honor of watching Mr. Wilson perform at the Central Avenue Jazz Festival, a venue he regularly came back to, largely because of his love and fond for memories on Central Avenue and the community that he helped build so many years ago. Watching him perform was an experience for me, and I was moved personally by this man's ability to move the crowd, even at 95 years. He just marked his 96th birthday last week, and in fact, we had had some discussions with his family about honoring him in council within, within the coming weeks. Mr. Wilson is survived by his beautiful wife, Josefina, whom he shared more than 65 years with, four children, four grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. He will be sorely missed on Central Avenue and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. In a way, this is an adjournment that's about the Beverly Hills Courier, which is a newspaper that I've been reading for almost 50 years, because it not only covers Beverly Hills, but the surrounding area on the West Side. Two months ago, we adjourned in memory of a dear friend of mine, the philanthropist and businessperson Paula Kent Meehan, who had recently purchased the Courier and was its chairperson. She was 82 at the time of her passing, and, and that was a great sadness for myself and everyone in Beverly Hills. This past Sunday, the Beverly Hills Courier and all of us lost another titan of that organization with the passing of its founder and publisher emeritus, March Schwartz. He was 97. For nearly a century going Philadelphia, he would stow away on a boat and ended up in China, first as a university student and then as an aide to General Joseph Stillwell during World War II. He later became the Public Relations Officer in Washington DC for First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt. With the end of the war, he came here and attended Southwestern Law School, but decided the newspaper business was his true calling, so he went to work for the Los Angeles Mirror, rose to the editor for the Mirror News, and then became the advertising manager for the New York Times West Coast Edition. Then he decided to found his own community paper, and on July 27th, 22nd, 1965, the first edition of the Courier was published. 1978, he became a member of the White House Press Corps, subsequently covered Presidents Carter, Reagan, George H.W. Bush, and Bill Clinton. He was a titan of journalism and a great civic hero for Beverly Hills, serving on the board of the Friars Charitable Foundation, and being named Citizen of the Year by the Beverly Hills Chamber of Commerce, and Man of the Year by the Beverly Hills Education Foundation. He reluctantly gave up the day-to-day operations of the Courier and sold the paper after suffering a debilitating stroke in the early 2000s. He had met his wife Linda in 1996, and they had been constant companions from then until his death. He had forced... He had four sons, three daughters, ten grandchildren, and a great-grandson. His funeral service will be at 2:00 PM this Sunday at the Large Chapel at Hillside Memorial Park. According to his wife, he had always quipped, "I prefer to be buried on a Sunday so as many people, friends and enemies, may attend." March Schwartz had countless friends and created a great paper, which is still going to this day, and he will be much missed for a very significant impact that he had.
Thank you. Any others? I have two. Colleagues, our veterans are true heroes. The veterans that come out of the military and join our city family as sworn officers, the Los Angeles Police Department of the Fire Trooper are superheroes. It's shocking that we stand here today in memory of yet another Los Angeles police officer. Eric Alcaraz, a twenty-four-year-old Los Angeles Police Department Patrol Officer, was killed this past weekend in a traffic collision in Torrance on Saturday, September 6th. Alcaraz was driving his own private motorcycle when he collided on Western Avenue just before 5:00 PM on Saturday. A driver in a Kia Optima turned left from West 234th Street on the southwestern and collided with him. Alcaraz, a Marine Corps veteran, worked for the Los Angeles Police Department for only eighteen months. He just finished his one-year probation and in fact, Sunday would have been his first day assigned to West LA area. This marks now seven officers this year. He leaves behind his mother and his father. I didn't get the opportunity to meet Eric, but I was having dinner with a dear friend of mine this weekend, who is also an LAPD officer, and his daughter had the privilege of actually dating Eric a couple times. And he heard the news and the family knew him and said that if you had to create the ideal American, if you had a blank piece of paper and say, what would a true superhero be? It's Eric. This is the kind of person and an individual we look for and hope for to come into our lives. And so it is with deep sadness that we mourn his passing at a very young age, twenty-four years old. He had been living at home with his parents, just saving enough money to buy his own house and really start his career and his life. He was taken way too soon and too suddenly. We will let you know as soon as arrangements are made so we can all participate and join the family as well. It is also with great sadness that we announced the passing of Roman Catholic Bishop Silero Flores, who passed away on September 6th. He was a native of Corona. His father was an immigrant from Sinaloa, Mexico. He received a bachelor's degree from Loyola Marymount University and he studied law at Stanford University. He practiced law in Riverside and Los Angeles Counties prior to entering St. John Seminary in Camrio in 1986. Flores practiced business litigation law for a decade in Riverside and Los Angeles Counties before being ordained in 1991 as a priest and the Diocese of Orange. He was then consecrated as an auxiliary bishop of the diocese in 2009. After serving in several posts in Orange County, he was named as a co-adjuder bishop in San Diego by Pope Benedict XVI in January 2012. September of 2013, he became the fifth bishop of the San Diego Diocese, succeeding Bishop Robert Brahm, who retired. He was the first Hispanic bishop to preside over San Diego. Flores selected his Episcopal motto, "For the greater glory of God." His service was marked by commitment to youth and to the disadvantaged. Bishop Flores is the cousin of my executive secretary, Cindy Varela. He is survived by two sisters, Patty and Stella, and three brothers, Tony, Bill, and Bobby. Our thoughts and our prayers are with him and the church and his family at this time. Seeing no other adjourning motions, thank you all, be safe.